I'd like to call the Custer County Board of County Commissioners meeting the order on Thursday, July the 6th at 9:00 a.m. Lockett, would you do us the honor of leading this in place, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Commissioner Katnick?
Here.
Commissioner Hood?
Present.
Commissioner Prince?
Yeah.
Attorney Clint Smith?
Present.
And Clerk to the Board Kelly Camper, present.
Okay, thank you. Do we have any amendments to the agenda?
I do not, Mr. Chairman.
I have one that maybe we're not sure. We had asked a firm from Colorado City, engineering firm, they made a presentation a couple of weeks ago to come back, and I'm not sure if they're going to make it today or not, I've not heard. But if they do, we'll add them to the agenda at that time.
And Bob, Gary had come in yesterday afternoon and said that he had not made it in yesterday morning and that you had told him to come in this morning.
Yeah.
Sarah?
Is Hannah?
No, they're pouring concrete for their barns this morning. So she's not going to make it in for hers. And so I told Gary, I said, because you're here about 9:45, because Sarah's supposed to be at 10:00, then that will be good. Will that work?
I talked to Gary last night, too. Yeah, good. All right. I know there are amendments to the agenda. Do I hear motion to approve the agenda as printed? Still move?
Still moved, sorry.
Second? Okay. All the question, all in favor say aye. Aye, both same sign, motion. Past agenda is approved. At this time, we'd like to go to the introduction of our audience, please, and we'll start over here at Dallas.
Okay, Dallas Anderson, Airport Advisory Board.
Jack Pughus Sutner.
Ken Patterson.
Whatever. Custer County resident.
Sue Pittman.
Lockett Pittman, I'm with Ken, whatever he says.
You don't want to be careful.
Yeah, that's true.
Bill Canoth, resident.
Okay, thank you very much. At this time, we'd like to move into the public comment period. If anybody have any public comments you'd like to make. Lockett?
Yeah, I've got two. First one is to really address the Clint. I understand that the petition for recall is based on the Colorado statutes 24 and 30, and I wonder if the current county commissioners have not complied with those statutes.
My role as county attorney is to give legal advice to the commissioners when they ask me a question. I'm not going to give legal advice to people in the audience.
It wasn't a legal question, it was just whether they had or haven't.
That requires a legal answer.
Okay. All right. The second thing I have is previous commissioners, we're looking at Eagle Med, which is now a loaner in existence, but we're the previous county commissioners, we're looking at Eagle Med, the Flight for Life Ambulance Service, and as I recall, that you as commissioners, new commissioners said you would bring this up again, and I know you have a budget meeting coming up, and I was wondering if you consider that, because I know that what it was based on was that, you know, residents paid $25, you know, and the county threw in some money that that would be insurance. I know that some residents today are paying $125, which isn't a lot of money, for some people it is. So I just hope you guys would look at that again and see if that's possible.
Okay, the Eagle Med has actually changed their name to React, now I think that it is.
Right.
And we do have a number in the county who are subscribers, as you said, and I would think that would be something that we could certainly consider as a public item.
Okay, thank you.
I agree.
You agree?
Yeah.
Okay. Next.
Okay. Yes, sir.
That Eagle Med, I heard that it went bankrupt. So they sold out and somebody else has got it under React?
Well, they've had two or three changes of ownership, but Eagle Med is flying out of Salida in Buna Vista. I've actually seen.
Yeah.
Actually, we had a situation maybe a month ago where somebody out your way was fished on the Arkansas and had a heart attack, and React flew, although it hadn't been Salida at that hospital, and React flew him from Salida to the Springs or wherever they took him to.
Okay, so they're still...
Oh, yes, they're very much in business, yes.
Oh, good.
Anything else? Okay. Thank you very much. Any amendments I would like to think? Not maybe?
Nope.
Okay, thank you. Next item will be commissioner items.
I've got one.
Donna?
I just want to mention that today at 11:30, Jeffrey Wood will be back down with his students to assess the county courthouse building today. And they are from the University of Denver, and this is regarding the Dole grant continuation of that grant. So this is the last building that they will be assessing, and then we'll be expecting their report soon.
And this is their, I believe, their architecture class?
Their architects, their students, yes, so he's got three students.
And I believe, at least part of them are graduate students, I'm not sure if they all are or not. My sense was that they were all graduate students. And this is something that we tried last year, and we got a little bit of information, but not enough, and they were down and met with the board three, four weeks ago, and they're coming back to finish up today.
I'd also like to request us to look at our schedule and have another evening meeting. So if everybody could look at that, and if we could do that as soon as possible for our constituents, because we promised to do that in March.
This is July 11th, next Tuesday. This is coming Tuesday. I won't be here that day.
I think we'd rather wait than... I guess I would like to have the results of this assessment. Just something to think about, I don't know if you want to schedule it now, we kind of really need to have Brenda here to put it in for public notice.
I'd like to do that.
Did you see the 11th?
I suggest the 11th, but that's going to be two...
That's only, that's only four days away.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's fine.
And Clint won't be here.
All right.
Now, San Isabel is the...
Is on the 19th.
19th, isn't it?
Yes.
Maybe our 31st meeting when we start, oh no, we can't do the check.
Do we want to have it that week sometime?
Which week?
The week of the 17th.
Well, we already have a meeting on the 19th Wednesday.
We have San Isabel.
On Wednesday.
Right. But you're talking about a commissioner meeting or just a public meeting?
I'd rather do a commissioner.
I'd rather do a commissioner meeting, just to bring everybody up to speed with where we are and what we've been doing.
But the week of the 24th.
I'm good, the week of the 24th, you just have to say which day.
24th?
Monday?
No, I said the week of the 24th.
The week of the 24th.
Yeah, the week of the 24th. I was thinking maybe Tuesday, the 25th, does that work? Yeah, that's fine.
Tuesday, the 25th.
Good. And we'll have that in the courtroom?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Do you want to set a time?
Yeah. Tony, you want to do it? I did six.
And that's, what time do we start?
What's convenient?
Seven.
Seven?
Seven.
Let's do seven. It's give people a chance to get home, take their doggy out for a walk, come on in.
Get the milk and down, cats fed.
Do I hear a motion to amend our meeting schedule to add an additional meeting?
I move that we add an additional meeting on July 25th at 7:00 in the Custer County Court Room, the regular Board of County Commissioner meeting, informational, also for the public, and we'll keep comments from there.
I'll second that. Any discussion? All in favor say aye. Aye. Both same sign, motion carries. Any other amendments? Jay?
Yes, sir. I have none.
I've got one, and I guess, I don't see anybody here that was from Wetmore yesterday that was here. Talked to the, to the state brand inspectors, or actually the local brand inspector called me last evening, and their policies are, they will only come work strays, if you find something that's astray on your place, you have to corral it, and they'll come out and look at it and try to determine ownership. If you already know who it belongs to, they won't get involved. I haven't had a chance to talk with Gary Ziegler this morning. He called a while ago, but I was out setting water, and I didn't get back to him before the meeting, but I know they went down there yesterday, and before the meeting's over today, I'll be able to tell you if they gathered the two bulls that were out, and got them put back where they belong, and have made arrangements to have the trip testing done. That's the last that I have as of voice message I had this morning, so I'll let you know where we stand. Okay. Attorney items.
Since yesterday, the only thing I want to report on was, there was a gentleman in yesterday, he had talked to both of you about a letter he had gotten, and he was concerned about it. I stopped by and visited with him after the meeting yesterday, explained what was going on, and told him he didn't need to respond to it or do anything right now, so I set his mind at ease. And I said, if he had any further contact, to let me know.
Thank you, Clint.
Yeah, I stopped by later yesterday, and he was extremely pleased.
Okay.
Told him, "Thank you for the extra effort," because that's going above and beyond. Thank you. Anything else for attorney items?
No, that's it.
Do we have any need for the executive session today?
I do not.
Okay, I have none either. Let's move in, what I'm going to do, folks, let's go through where we can on old business, but it comes times for our committee reports. When we have staff come in, I'm going to jump ahead, because they pull out to be here, and it's kind of awkward when they have to wait three or four hours to come on the agenda. So, the first item under old business are the storage containers in the county. Who, is this? Kenny, you got any comments on this, or? I wonder why we...
I don't have any reference to what this is about.
Is that the planning commission, from their last meeting that approved?
Lumberyard? We handled that last week, our last meeting, or, 30, so, okay, I'm going to, yes, sir.
I don't think it's, went through the planning commission yet, but there was another one just outside the city, Russell. But I think they just did the presentation. I don't think the planning commission had the...
Made any.
Is that the, is that the one above Shadow Ridge?
Yes.
Yeah, that one, I heard about, I heard about it, but I didn't...
At this time, if we have nothing, no one here to address, excuse me, yes, sir.
My name is Bill Canoth, and I guess this item was put on the agenda because it was something that I discussed with Jay, and I thought it was going to be discussed today by the commissioners.
You mentioned to me, this is the Shadow Ridge ones, right?
No, I'm talking about county as a whole.
Oh, the county as a whole?
I'm talking about counties as a whole, meaning, let me give my background.
Okay, this is, this is regarding the storage containers.
It is.
Okay, please, good.
Okay. I'm a, one of your reclusive residents, okay? I'm a 66, 500 State Highway 69. Okay. In my background, I was in the development business for 35 years out of Kansas City, and because of that, I dealt with every municipality within a five-state area in the Midwest. And I will tell you, every one of those municipalities have an ordinance or restriction against storage containers, and it's as to location, and appearance, and use. And apparently, from what I understand, here in our county, that doesn't exist. And so what I'm suggesting to the commission is that it be remanded to the planning commission for review, to try and restrict or have restrictions on location and use of storage containers. And the imminent detail here, a storage container is not a building, okay? By legal precedent, it is not a building, it is a storage container. And they were designed to be on railcars and boats, not to be set in a pasture in Custer County. And that's my objection, because I've started to see them now infiltrating through the county, and it's an eyesore. So if we're trying to promote growth in Custer County, I mean, growth comes because people like what they see, you have growth because you have strong ordinances and building codes, well, this falls right in that arena. And from what I understand, the planning commission right now is looking at something to do with building codes or something for the county. I mean, I would suggest and appeal to you to send it to them to include it. Because the last thing we want, and I can tell you where they are in the county now, you go down the road and you just see one sitting out there, half of them are painted poorly, multiple colors, and they're, and actually, what I understand is that you can get a permit to put them in. Well, that's a building permit. That's not right. They are not a building. Yes, sir.
You are absolutely correct. I spoke a few weeks ago, I don't remember putting this on the agenda, but I may have. You were concerned that someone right next to your building property line put these, and it's an eyesore and that kind of problem?
Well, this is just about me, but I mean, that's what sparked my interest.
I understand that, and I know that towns both have restrictions on whether they can either be put in or not, and if they are, they can only be put into specific areas, like industrial areas, not in residential areas.
Heavy industrial, yes.
Right. I will take your comments today, and I will ask the head of the zoning and planning, Jackie Hobbie, to ask the committee to look at that, whether it's a separate issue or will be included in the discussion about building codes, will be up to that committee. But I think your question is brought up properly, and I would, I'll go ahead and I'll, if it's acceptable with my colleagues here, I'll ask the zoning and planning committee to ask their group to look at that and see if they feel that there's something that needs to be done.
That'd be great. All the municipalities I dealt with, there was one place they could go, heavy industrial, and they were never a building, they were a storage container, and they had to go behind the building, and there had to be screening. And the concern is, is the public seeing them, and then secondly, you know, your neighbor seeing them. So, and I would hope we never allow them, you know, out in any ag zoning areas, they're atrocious.
Um, do you think it's acceptable with me to bring it over to Jack, you know, the committee to look into it?
This...
I will take care of that personally myself.
Thank you for bringing it, for bringing me up and bringing us up to date.
I probably put this on...
It's just an idea.
I probably put this on the agenda when we spoke a month or more ago, and I'm sorry it slipped my mind, a lot of things have happened since then, but I do remember it completely now, and I will follow through.
Perfect.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Proposed zoning resolution changes. Do we need to get Jackie over here?
I, I do not know what this is in regard to either. Mr. Chairman, I don't know why this is on here, I did not...
Jackie's on vacation.
I can tell, I can say why it's on, he said Jackie's on vacation today, but this is primarily because of the public meeting we had a couple of weeks ago, specifically on the light pollution issue. And the matter is before the commissioners today to decide if you want to refer it to the planning commission for further investigation to determine whether or not the zoning resolution should be amended in that regard. We had a proposal that was discussed, but if it's going to go forward, it needs to go to the planning commission, so it would just be a matter of you making a decision whether or not you want to refer it, whether you felt there was sufficient public interest in it to do that.
Isn't there a meeting scheduled for the 11th?
That's what I thought.
Their next meeting?
I don't know.
To put it on their agenda?
I, no, they'll, they'll put it on their agenda themselves, just referring it if you want to refer it to them.
Okay, I certainly feel that we ought to refer it to them and let them look at it. I'd like to make a public comment, that one of the newspapers has said that change your light, go to jail, or some headline similar to that, absolutely untrue, that has not been discussed, and that will be part of the discussion that comes out. So, this fictitious headline, I just want to let the public know it's not a true statement.
I guess my position on this, I have no problem referring it to it, but I want to refer to it as an item of discretion, that we have taken no official position until they've had a chance to do their work and come back to us.
Absolutely agree with that.
I think that's important, that we, that we, that it be entirely up to them, and I, but we in no way are putting pressure on them one side or the other.
Absolutely agree.
Okay, will you refer that to?
I will.
Zoning? I don't think any other actions are required at this time, want to?
I don't think so.
Retag budget, Chuck?
I was hoping to be able to present you with the contract for retag. Unfortunately, I found out that they are rewriting the contract, and that it is not ready for review. I do have a budget that we came up with, but I'd like to hold off on the budget, because I don't know if they're going to change the amount of the retag grant. So, it probably, they're going to discuss it their next meeting, which is in a couple of weeks, so I probably won't be able to present it until, or July, excuse me.
July, okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right. Thanks for the update.
I also just want to mention, just received an email from you saying that the sheriff's office and the county office's office telephone numbers have been set up. So thank you for doing, following through.
And I'll send you another email, because there's a couple of other problems there.
Okay, good, thanks.
Thank you very much. Anything else?
Good.
Thank you, Pittmans.
Thank you.
Okay, at this time, we'll move in, or a little bit early, maybe we can go into the airport at this time?
Oh, he's good.
Come forward, please. We try to stay fairly close to the public's agenda, because this is the time that people expect these reports to be given.
Thank you.
I don't want you to come here at 10:30, we've already done it at 9:00, so.
Okay, well, I've got a few pieces of paperwork this morning. You haven't seen this copy of my report yet, because I've been working on it all weekend and everything, so. This, I may not have enough copies.
You don't.
Oh, thank you. This one is just for information, and we'll refer to that. And this one is from the Aeronautics Board, and this is really important, but it's not something we need to get into this morning. I gave this to you for your, you can peruse that, and we'll talk about it at a later date. What it is, it's a proposal for, I don't know, what's the word that I want? Assurances for non-nipponist airports. And there's a lot of information in there, and so if you can get a chance to look that over next month or two, and...
You're going to bring it back up?
And I'll bring it back up and get a good explanation. I'm in contact with David Ulan, and he's going to help me understand it all. Okay. Let's see, what else do I have? Oh, and we've got... Oh, huh, there's a back page to that. This one is the local fuel prices, and this is just for information also. You need a copy of that?
Thank you.
Okay, we had our, our monthly meeting was held June 15th, we had four members present. One member was in the hospital, and one was in South Korea, so, but we still had a quorum. Lynn Legree was there as an audience member. We approved the minutes from May 18th under old and new business. Fuel report, in June, we sold 82 gallons of fuel, and that's because...
You might have a fuel pump.
The fuel dispenser went belly up. The new dispenser was installed on the 12th, it didn't work. They came back on the 27th, and it looked like they had it all rip-roaring and ready to go. In fact, I emailed everybody to say that it was going. Two days later, it started break, tripping the breaker, the main breaker for the pump, and did that all the way through the weekend, and we really had a busy day on Saturday. The flight group, they call the yak pack, showed up, and they had a little flyover and all that, but we were having to set that breaker after every fueling, in the middle of some of the fuelings. I've contacted Eaton twice since Sunday, Saturday, and they haven't responded to me yet.
I have not seen this bill come through on Eaton.
Yeah, well, they're smart enough not to ask for money till they get it working, I think.
Well, there's nothing, what I'm saying, excuse me, I don't mean to jump ahead, you want to make comment?
I'd like to make the same comment. Obviously, we don't want to pay them.
That's correct.
Totally satisfied. I'm sorry.
I'm likely different than that. I think maybe, I'm just suggesting that we contact them and say, "Look, we have lost this much service, because this pump has been out of order, and unless this pump is brought online within the next three, four days, that we will be deducting from your bid, because it's cost us money and time, and we have some situation that is inconveniencing the pilots, putting some in danger, and it has to be fixed."
Well, the last email that I sent to them, I told them that we've lost fuel sales and traffic, and I asked them to let us know when we can expect action on this item. But as far as a letter in that note, I think the attorney would be the place to go for that.
What is this gentleman's position with the company?
Uh, he is head salesman, I guess you could say. He's, uh, he does the field research and looks at, well, like, he came out and surveyed our fuel system, and came up with a recommendation last year about a new fuel pump, which we needed, of course. He's not the owner of the business, and I don't think he's the manager either, but he is the, the most visible person when you call him, he's the one that comes to talk to you.
Dallas, can I?
His name?
I'm sorry.
You need his name?
Well, I was going to ask for his name, and then I could go online and find out.
His name is Brian Pally.
Do you think it would be possible, based on, now, not the time that we were waiting for them to make the installation, but the time that it's been down because of whatever they did that was not, appears to not have been appropriate, that is causing this tripping? Is there a way for you to estimate what kind of revenue loss we've had? Maybe look at last year's sales during that same period, and just, I would like...
Well, it could, yeah.
If you could get that to me, I'd like to suggest, and of course, it's your choice, I'd like to suggest that maybe I call them in my capacity as commissioner.
Okay.
Explain to them how much money we have lost to this point, if this is not rectified within whatever's reasonable 40... within whatever's reasonable, 48 hours, whatever feels reasonable, that we'll be talking to the county attorney to see if maybe there's some legal action that should be taken. I mean, I hate to threaten people, but we lose money, and this is wrong. So, if you would, if you would like me to do that, I'd be, I'd be real happy to do that, if we could get together maybe later today and you can give me that information.
Okay, yeah.
If you'd like me to give them a call, I'd be glad to.
Well, I have, I have that information in my files at home, too.
Not only the salesman, but the company.
Mm-hmm. Sir?
Not only just the salesman.
Oh, no, that's why I was asking, I could go online and find out who the president, general manager, somebody. I don't even want to talk to the salesman, I have no interest in that.
None of the, none of the information I have says anything about who the owner is or manager.
I'll find it. If they're registered in Colorado, which I'm certain they are, we're going to find out.
Sure they have.
If you could just give me, and it could be a rough estimate, we estimate approximately X amount of dollars has been lost revenue because of, of your inability to get this working when it's supposed to be. That's the kind of information I'd like.
Okay.
How many aircraft did you have come in over the weekend?
Uh, seven.
There's another example. On Monday, we had seven aircraft come in, and we had to keep flipping the breakers so they could get fuel.
Yeah, and Bob Jolly was here earlier, and he said that the powered parachute people are out there this morning, and they're going to spend the night tonight and fly again tomorrow. But the thing about the powered parachutes is they use motor gas. They don't use aviation fuel. So, to get gas, they have to come to town anyway. So, it's still an all.
Have we ruled out that the electrical issue is not a our issue as opposed to their issue? I mean, are we assuming that it's their failure of their machine, and that's why it's tripping as opposed to we have our own electrical issue? Have we looked at that?
Uh, well, between myself and Bill Geipel, and we're both electricians, that breaker was not given any problem in the last X number of years.
Okay.
They installed the pump, but it didn't work. They came back two weeks and two days later, and trouble shot the wiring, and we all thought that they had it. And two days later, here comes the first customer, and the breaker starts tripping.
Thank you.
So, an electrician would obviously say that it's the problem of a new installation
That's all I was saying.
Since that breaker hadn't been a problem in years past.
Thank you. Let's get together a little later today, and I'll
Okay. All righty, well, now that we're up to date on that failure, and for the record, I'm really disappointed with the methods and operations of this company. Uh, fuel report, oh, yeah, we sold 82 gallons because it was down. Right now, the gallons in the tank, 574. So, Bob Jolly has already put out a call to find someone to split a load with, and he's just
What's fuel running right now?
Uh, fuel is, oh, 344 was our last quote from the company.
That's within the last week or so?
That was the day before yesterday.
Good.
Uh, that would put our selling price at 433, which, as you can see from our prices around, around the country here, we would be right there with everybody.
Right in the middle.
So.
Good job.
Okay. The fly-in, still on track for September 23rd. As a reminder, Alan Butler is chairman of that committee, and he's got everything well in hand, it looks like to me, so. Trey Crosswell, he put in a letter of interest. We found out that his wife had been involved in an accident, and he says he can't give us any time. I guess it was serious. I've emailed him a couple of times to find out how she's doing, and he hasn't answered me yet, so. Okay, now, the picture of the airport. Bill Geipel is requesting that track taxiway three be paved. As close as I can figure, that's what he was talking about. He wants, he wants to build on lots 38 to 42 approximately.
Is that where he had the proposal for the museum?
Nope. I told him that what he's wanting needs to go through Jackie at the zoning office and to the Board of Commissioners for approval. And I also told him that he needs to get on the agenda and come and talk to you people because there's an MOU that's still active, and number, the item number two on that MOU has never been completed. So
This diagram does not even include lots 38 through 42, so where
I know it's, it's not
Estimated out here.
Well, if I, if I may
Be on the north end of where the current hangers are.
Uh, this is taxiway number one, right here.
Okay.
This is taxiway number two, and this would be taxiway number three. And as best as I could figure what he was pointing and shooting, he wants to build three or four hangers right along here.
That's not, that's not my mistake.
And so, that's probably more than 38 to 40, but anyway.
I'm just going to suggest that he goes through our process.
Yeah, I told him that. And he said, "Oh, somebody told me that you've got to tell the commissioners that it's okay." Well, I told him that I have already, as, as an advisory board, we have recommended to the commissioners that any improvements that somebody wants to do out there, we're all for it. So, we're on record for that.
Right. So, if you would please tell him that he just needs to go to zoning planning, and eventually he'll come back to us and maybe just go through our normal procedure.
Right, I'll relay that.
Will there be electricity to these hangers?
I'm sorry?
Will there be electricities to the, to these hangers?
Uh, he probably will want electricity, yeah. Now, where the electricity is out there, I don't know. There's supposed to be, there's supposed to be a transformer somewhere in this neighborhood because there's a well out there, too. But I don't, I have not yet seen a transformer there, so.
They're pretty obvious.
Uh, yeah, they stand up pretty high, and they're green. So, anyway, I'll, I'll pass that on to him, tell him to go through the procedure. And any questions I can answer?
I hope, unless there's something
Or just whatever I've talked about?
You and I had some correspondence about the damage to Dr. Smith's hangar.
Yes.
It, and I'm paraphrasing, but if I'm incorrect, please just correct me. We felt that the person who was doing the mowing at the time was personally responsible for that?
He said that he would take care of it.
Okay. Could, could you please light a little fire under him to take care of it? Because I get a call on a continuous basis, what's happening, what's happening, and it would be not, if I remember correctly, it's just right around $1,000, it's not a huge
Yeah, it shouldn't even be that much, shouldn't be over 500.
Well, whatever it was, but
It's long enough.
If we could ask the gentleman to please honor his
Okay.
And we'll get it over with.
Again, I will speak to both of them.
Thank you very much.
And I've done that four or five times in the last three years.
I know.
I don't think you're aware, but as a Board of Commissioners, six, eight months ago, we made the decision that the county would pay to get it fixed. And, and that time was to get some estimates and fix it.
Oh, I wasn't aware of that.
So, we need to, if we're going to do that, we checked the records, but we did because the person that did it was, was Alan Butler. And Alan was working as a volunteer, which falls under
That's true, yeah.
Our county volunteer policies. And the, we can check back through the minutes and see, but we did, we did discuss this, and our point was, well, that Alan had done a lot for the airport and struggling with the health issues he's been facing, that we thought, well, we'll just take care of it, and that was
I wouldn't, I must not have been here for that meeting.
But that was, we checked and see, but that was the discussions that we had, I'm going to say, maybe a year ago. You're nodding your head, Jackie?
I think, yeah, I think I remember that, too.
I recall that also, that was what was discussed.
Okay, well
My information with you just now is based upon our conversation, I wasn't privy to this, but knowing this now, I would say, who should get the estimates, and let's get this done, because I think Dr. Smith has been very, very patient, and I think it's time we fix this minor discrepancy.
The last correspondence I saw, Mr. Dr. Smith was going to fix it if we would pay in a timely manner.
Well, I'm going to say, because it was a liability, you need to go through Donna Hocky.
Right.
And we have talked to Donna, but Donna's been a part of this discussion.
Oh, yeah, she has. As my history on it, it happened, I think sometime in late May of whatever year that was, about three years ago. I didn't, I was not privy to that knowledge until August. And I went to see Donna, and our insurance has a 30-day limit on filing claims, and so that was way past 30 days. But I talked to Alan about it, and this was June, July, always three months later or so, and that's when he told me that he was going to take care of it.
And he was embarrassed that it had happened.
Well, yeah, that's
It was one of these things, you have more reasons, one round, caught the corner, billion
Happens.
And we knew that the insurance would not cover it, but we decided as a previous board that we'll get it fixed.
Well, that's
And I think, did you, any of the, either one of you get the correspondence from Dr. Smith asking if we would, if we would process the bill in a timely manner?
I never saw it.
I have received multiple comments from him, most of them verbally, I don't think I have anything written, what's going on, when is this going to happen? He knows that I'm responsible for the airport. The commissioner, and I told him that, you know, we would look into it, and we'll get it done as soon as we, what's reasonable, and that's when I contacted you. The information apparently wasn't exactly correct, but bottom line is, now that we have a plan, let's go ahead and get some bids, and let's get this done.
Okay, well
No, the man said he would fix it. He would do it, then send us a bill. Do we still want to go bids? Or should we just let him take it?
What if his bill is $1,500, and an announcer that could do it for 300?
Okay, I went to Ace Hardware twice, by the way, two, about a year apart, and they helped me find the proper material, the proper color, and as I remember, the bill for the material was going to be about $300.
If Dr. Smith
And they've got that information
He sends me an email saying that he'll do the repairs for $300, and I'm concerned like Donna said about liability, and it indemnifies the county for him doing the work. I'm fine.
Well, uh
So, you're, let me just understand something. You're saying the owner, Dr. Smith said he would do the repairs, or Alan Butler said he would do the repairs?
Alan Butler said he would pay for the repairs.
Okay.
And what we're learning now is that it's not going to happen. The county will pay for the repairs, and I'm fine with that.
Okay.
I'm just concerned about, I mean, anytime we do anything, we put it out for bid, and we do that just to make sure that there's, you know, done in an appropriate manner and without additional cost.
I think we have an additional issue here, folks, we want to get down to that nitpicking. This man's airport, his hangar was damaged three years ago, and we've done nothing to fix it for three years.
And I'm trying very hard right now to get that resolved. I agree with you. This is
All the time, we go fix it for free if someone purchased materials for Alan Butler. I know him.
Well, our board's position was that Alan has done an awful lot.
Yes.
It doesn't need to be his headache. And all those things that happened, and we as a board made a decision that we would take care of it, and we would, we'll see what happens.
I'll donate my time to go out and fix it.
But that, you know, I, I want to get it done because the man has been more than patient.
Thank you, that is very nice of you.
Absolutely.
I really appreciate it. I don't know if that would be necessary, but that offer is very well received, thank
You need me, call me.
Are you a licensed contractor?
Not, not yet, we're still pretty new, I haven't even opened my business here yet. But I will license if you need me to, to do it, if that, if that's what is requiring me to do it, to be on that property.
This is, again, you know, this has got so many weeds in it.
I understand.
We were wanting to put a door into the courtroom, and the biggest problem we had was that we didn't have a contractor that had workman's comp
I see.
To do it, to do it. And he wanted us to pay the workman's comp, and we said that's costing us too much money.
Yes, sir.
Now, why don't you visit between, whoever, there may be a way, I don't know if, Donna, what's your thoughts?
I think the conversation needs to happen with the owner of the hangar first.
Sure.
Let's see where we are with that. Mr. Dr. Smith, now that you're aware that the county is willing to pay for the repair?
Okay, then
I will contact Dr. Smith. I will find out what his position is, and
We'll go from there.
Okay.
Anything else? Got any big bucks walking across that runway?
No, but there was 13 antelope on Monday when I was out there. They were running her straight down the runway.
How's the camera working?
Camera is working okay. We're behind on downloading the pictures and getting them counted, but we're still working on it.
Say weather working now?
Say weather is perfect. Oh, except for one, one imperfection. The say-weather box we got was failing to report wind gusts. So, we contacted the manufacturer, and they said they would send us a new say-weather box, we'll have to return the old one, and they'll just take care of that at no cost to us.
Okay. Thank you, my friend, for all you do on
God, we're, we're still trying.
Road and Bridge! Morning, Gary.
Good morning, Bob.
Morning, Roger.
I thought Roger
Roger always sits over here, I'm feeling offended.
It's nothing against Sorry, I slipped up and forgot. I was supposed to be here yesterday morning. Roger was gone, and I was out.
You didn't miss a thing because we were way behind yesterday, didn't get three parts for almost, so we didn't cross a bit of land.
So, when you called me on the radio, I was a little bit taken back, I thought, oh, yeah, I was supposed to be there.
Okay.
Right now, we're, we're still prepping roads for our chip seal project that we're going to start on the 12th. And Monday of next week, we're going to go down to Wedmore, and we've got to do some hot mixed patching for that preparation for chip seal down there. We're going to do about 1.3 mile north of town.
That's on the road that's on the east side of Hart Scrabble. It goes down by the way, as you hit the curve, you go straight ahead.
Okay. Okay. I know that you're doing your asphalt patching, but actually had a complaint on copper gulch. Is that gonna be rectified? Is that the finished product that's down as we see it?
No. On copper gulch?
At this point in time, yes, it is until we-
Are they complaining about the condition we left it in right now? Because it's actually better. I'm wondering what they're complaining about.
It looks, I don't know if you've had it, if either one of you have had a chance to see it, but I traveled it on Monday. It just looks like a patch job, okay, which obviously is what it is. So I guess it's, will that last for a period of time?
Yeah, I see a lot of that. It's been dinner in the county and it lasts real well. What we've done is we've identified some trouble spots that are starting to crack out, alligator out is what we call it, where the material's starting to crack. And anyway, we've gone out to those areas, so we felt like we're the worst and needed the most attention and we put fresh asphalt on them, hold them together. It's just kind of a preservative is what it is, but also it not only preserves the road, but it makes it smoother, so hey, if I were you-
I mean, I drove over, but I guess, I guess the complaint is like, why don't you do an entire section?
Money.
Which is what I said. But I had to ask. I had to ask.
If I may interject here.
Yeah, that's-
What was, I drove it Monday afternoon. And what they've done is exactly the policy that we follow for a number of years in, in patching these roads, trying to live along with it. It'd be nice if we come in there and lay a four-inch hot mix.
I'd love to.
We'd love to, but that, I don't know what that costs for a mile, but it gets to be fairly expensive.
And the only reason I'm bringing this up is we had what C.DOT just did on 96, so you saw solid asphalt.
Yeah, it was a nice special.
I know. I know. But I mean, but that's what you're seeing. You're seeing people travel this way.
You know what I might do, Donna, is I might give C.DOT and I'll get a, get some figures on what they spend for that, so we can do a comparison to what we spent.
That would be great because then we could make it public.
The C.DOT West Cliff project is 1.9 million.
Yeah.
What they repaired out there is just maintenance, but I'll bet you that's, they curved probably about maybe a mile, not quite a mile on 96?
Yeah. I'll tell you what, what, what we had, we checked on doing the lake road with exactly what they did, $90,000 a mile.
For-
And that's been, that was through Lafarge five years ago.
But that was for asphalt.
Yep.
Not including employee's time and expenses.
No, that's, it was $90,000 to have Lafarge come in and do it.
And how thick was that gonna be?
It was gonna be a two-inch compacted mat. So basically lay three compact and inch of it.
And how many miles we got out there? Probably about five or six.
We've got just over five, but that's, you guys just wanted to know a figure of what it, what it would cost us. That's what it would cost us. We don't have any-
But it would be nice to be able to say to the public.
It's, it's a-
It's a money issue, but-
Sure.
And, yeah, and if we look at that, what they did out here, the state highway, I would love to know what they're cautious because they had 12 or 14 trucks hauling asphalt on that project.
Oh, yeah, that stuff's probably three, four inches thick. I'll guess it numbers for you, because I'm curious too.
That would be great, just so that I can respond accordingly.
Okay, absolutely.
Yeah, what we're doing out there, guys, and what, what we're doing is prepping all of these roads with the monies that we can on that shoulder, because all we can afford is a chip seal. So what we do is build that shoulder. That's, that's our worst area. That's what comes apart first on us. So in laying the asphalt like we've been doing, remember last year, we had it done prior to doing the chip on pines and we did the same thing on, on what we've got done on the lake road. That one there was a little different story. Years ago, we chopped the first three foot of the road off, which was a dumb mistake. But, so we're having to go back, fix that. In any place that we get broken out shoulders, that works really well. That'll save us a lot of time till we can afford to chip it.
And that, but that will be chip sealed this year, right?
Out here on the lake road?
Copper gulch.
No, not copper gulch. No, we had some extra money to spend on the hot mix, so we went over to copper gulch because it was close by and it was one of the routes.
Tied it all together.
Needed some attention, so-
So will that be chip, chip sealed how soon?
Uh, we'll just have to-
We're looking at year after next. And the reason I say that is next year would be great if we could do our 200,000 plus, whatever you guys give us. That would be great to take that. That would pretty much take care of all of our chip seal. That, that we need to take care of shoulders, get them built back up, get them nice and tight again.
Yeah, we got a lot of shoulders starting to deteriorate, so we need to go in with hot mix probably next year and give them some attention before they get to the point where there's some-
Can you, maybe we won't do it good, Roger, but I can see we've got some blade. We have a little, the line where asphalt's just in a, in a bump in the middle of the road. Could we maybe run over that with a roller or with a-
We do. We do.
Pardon me?
We do. Yeah, we, we-
And that would make it look nicer.
Yeah, we do. Yeah, we use a rubber tire now because our steel drums down. Dang it.
We have to get a new roller.
We're gonna have to figure something out because we've had problems, it sounds like, for quite a while with this steel drum roller. And what happens is you couldn't be traveling down the road and it's electrical issue, I think, but anyway, the brake just sets up on you just like that. Byron's done what he can as far as trying to figure out what it is. And now it's to the point where we're gonna have to take it somewhere and get it worked on and hopefully they can figure it out.
Are you gonna be present for the budget training tomorrow? 10 o'clock?
Yeah. I didn't respond as to whether or not I'd be able to attend that.
If you want, it's Friday, it's a day off, but it's up to you, but if you might.
Actually, we're working tomorrow. In place of Monday, yes.
I'm in that.
It's here.
Okay, 10 o'clock?
10 o'clock.
Okay.
But, because the more information you can gather, the better off we're gonna be.
So you're working in Rosetta now? Or where you, today, where you're working?
Oh, we're working, what's that road that Vince is working on?
He's on Good Hope in Rosetta Hills subdivision. He's blading everything dry up there.
I heard talking about Four Corners and I was, oh.
Yeah, no, that's, that's 116 is over that way.
Okay.
We've got them spread out, one about all four.
Because we used to, we used to call that kind of a Four Corners here, where you went to Hobbies or went to Mitchell's.
Yeah, we got a blade on the north side of Lake.
In the old days?
Yeah. And we've got a blade over here and on copper, I mean, 255 Oak Creek grave. And then we got one out here southeast of town.
Are you still sort of manpower or is?
No, we're doing pretty good right now.
I think we're all right.
You got the last position filled that you-
About a week and a half ago.
I had a gentleman come in, I met with yesterday, who was so complimentary. He said, what can I do? And I said, you know what you can do? Why don't you write a letter to the B.O.C.C. telling them how, he says, it's ongoing, he's never seen his road so good since he's lived here. Unfortunately, I think it was Oak Creek grave, but I'm not sure what road he was talking about, but it'll be in the letter. And then he came back, he left, came back a few minutes later, he said, would you please tell Mr. Hyde that he just purchased a, a container of coffee beans or ground coff- I don't know what he purchased because I didn't look at it. It's in the store right next to the pawn shop, you know, with the, on the corner there. He said, I wanted to buy all the workmen coffee for the good job they're doing, so I thought that was very pleasant. So when you have a chance, you can stop over there, that's for you.
Wow, now you're gonna want to pay raise, you're getting, you know, fresh ground coffee.
On the flip side of that coin, you know, it's great to get those compliments, but then another individual that lives on Oak Creek grave called me the other day and said it's the worst he'd ever seen it, so.
I fully understand.
I'd rather hear what you told me.
And when I, when I get the ones yelling, I send a note to you also, you know, I have someone complaining about whatever road, but I get a nice one like that.
It is terrific.
I asked, I asked, he said, what can I do? I said, and I didn't tell him to buy anything, I said, why don't you give me a letter saying how pleased you are? I said, that goes a really long way for the gentleman and for their personnel files.
It does, because those are few and far between, the compliments we get. And I did, you know, once I got the complaint with that individual, I got it right in the pickup and I had it out there. There was a few places that needed to be touched up, but I didn't, and Roger even drove it too, and we didn't think it was that bad, so maybe they were wanting to drive a gravel road that feels like blacktop.
I drove Oak Creek grave about a week ago. And our portion, I thought, was equal or better than Fremont County's site was. I'm sure there's a few, a few corduroys and there's a couple little holes, but in terms of, I mean, that is a dirt road.
Yes.
And it's gonna, they have to realize, they live in the country and it's a dirt road.
Yeah.
Well, I feel, you know, I certainly agree with what the two of you said.
We, yeah, we, you know, if we get concerns about a road being bad, the first thing we do is go check it. We'll give it due diligence attention.
Now, I've got another one for you. You wanna talk about the getting the gravel at the end of work?
Edwards? Yeah, I sent an email to you yesterday after, after you and I spoke. I CC'd you on the email. He was not in a huge rush. He was just saying that you did a great job, except there was one dip. If you could fill that in. I said, I'll pass it on. I'm sure when they have asphalt in that area, you'll be able to fill it.
I didn't check it out.
It was Tony Supan's home is apparently, he said-
That's not us.
Okay, if it's not us and it's not us, I'll tell, I'll write back to you.
That is not us. That's the town of West Cliff, absolutely.
Okay, Edwards is not ours?
I haven't checked it out, but it doesn't sound like so to me to know.
It's not ours, I'll tell you.
If it's true, Tony's Supan is.
No, that's the town of West Cliff.
He was very, very nice. He was very complimentary of what was done. He said, there was just one little area. I will tell him he's in C.DOT.
Okay.
All right, that's fine.
Yeah, Town of West Cliff.
Town of West Cliff.
Okay, Town of West Cliff.
Not C.DOT.
I'll go there.
You know, your folks remind me of that ad on TV where they're playing with the ball and the guy says, Marco Polo, Marco Polo, you're sitting there, Town of West Cliff, Town of West Cliff, Town of West Cliff. All right, I think this is a great report, guys. What do you need from us?
We, we just need to keep on keeping on with what we're doing.
I didn't think about that before it came out, so.
Be thinking about that before budget time.
But we definitely gotta think about grabbing for this next year.
Oh, yeah.
So that's gonna, well, that's gonna require us some looking at things a lot differently.
What, like $200,000?
Uh, no, I don't know. Let's see, what, what's that been costing us? $2 and some cents a ton. I think it was $2.13.
And we can, according to Rusty, what he told me was he can only have so much on the ground at one time because of like dust control and things like that. And I think it's like 80,000 tons, so.
That's just budget time and something we're looking at.
Yeah, we're looking at, probably, I'm guessing anywhere from 80 to 100,000.
Yeah, it'll be more than that because I think we're gonna be probably, if we separate out 5/8 rock for our chip, because after this year, we won't have any rock. So we're gonna have to, when they come in and crush, we'll have to have them separate that 5/8 off of that. And they told me from areas that they can do that, so we'll plan on that and I'm guessing we're probably gonna look at about 450 a ton. And that would be the gravel and, and the rock.
Are you, do you stockpile from that same amount down in Wetman for use in Wetman?
Well, no, what we've been doing is just taking our material and hauling it down there. Is that what you mean?
Yeah.
We'll be in good shape in Wetmore after this year.
Yeah, that's the only issue we've got down there. And I don't, we talked about it briefly, but over there, the Over Creek Campground, I went over and drove that the other day and, and Forest Service says, well, they've got 70,000 to fix it. Well, it looks to me like that's County Road, that's how we turn off Over Creek till we get to the camp round. Is, is that right?
Well, I asked Larry about it, he said he didn't, or it wasn't County Road.
No, I believe-
Not County Road is what he told me.
Okay, well, they're, they're wanting to-
It's in our-
And Larry went in, I think, and they, they at least made it passable to get by there, which is what needed to be done.
They did, they took a bunch of gravel and went over there.
Well, it wasn't our stuff. It's stuff that, no, they had, no, Forest Service had it stockpiled a couple miles up the highway.
Great.
Took it off our stuff.
But the, they asked if we, depending what, how far they get with the 70,000, if we would provide a pipe. Well, I looked at that bridge and my gosh, that's gonna be a six-foot pipe.
Where's that at?
I think that's, pardon me?
Where's that pipe at?
Well, it comes off the road and goes into the house right there, just maybe 150 yards after you turn off the Over Creek Road.
That, yeah. That's a real drainage issue and a lot of that was caused by, by the individual himself.
Yeah, I mean, he's built just-
Were you talking about right in front of his-
Just gone up the draw.
He really did.
Were you talking about right in front of his house?
Yeah, and I, to me, my first question is, is that even County, or, I mean, it looks like a private drive off the road.
It is.
Yeah, that's-
And if that's the case, I don't feel we need to worry about fixing it. I mean, maybe I'm wrong. What's your thoughts, Roger?
I, I'll tell you what, guys, we, we need to do something and, and we need to take his check dams out. That's what caused 85% of that problem, is he built these cute little check dams and all that stuff over the covert and all that, and, and that just backed it all up.
Backed it up, come out of the creek, come right down the road.
Yeah, it chokes the road down. It comes right out on the road, but that's on the Forest Service, gonna have to work out with him.
So that's on the Forest, probably on, is it Lazarette?
Pardon?
Who?
Oh, no, it's, gosh dang it, what the heck's his name?
It's one of the old, old families over there, you know what I'm talking about.
But you know, the thing of it is, it's in front, it's on his property, but it's causing problems for the Forest Service roads, so they're gonna have to-
Well, he only owns an acre there.
On the, yeah.
Where his house and stuff is, and he's spread off of his property onto the neighbor's property.
Mm-hmm.
So at least that's what I've been told. So I'll visit with, with Jeff and see if we maybe get the Forest Service to go in there and, while they're fixing, clean that, clean that out.
That's exactly what's gonna have to happen. The Forest Service are gonna have to address the issue because they are the federal government.
Because Larry was telling me, it does it every year, forces it out onto the road and washes the road out.
It's Over Creek, I mean, it drains a pretty good amount of country.
So it, it's gonna be an ongoing issue unless they get something resolved.
Well, I'll have, makes sense to you, I'll, I'll have Jeff follow up on, tell them to fix it and, and then we'll see what, how far they go and if there's still a problem to get done, well, then we'll see, but.
John Herrera.
That's it, yeah. What's the individual's name that lives right there?
John Herrera.
Herrera. I had to, I couldn't think of it, but that, he's the one that's got the acre there.
But that's, pardon me, yeah, that, I think the Forest Service is definitely gonna have to confront him about two different check dams in front of two dang coverts, you know?
I'd rather they did it because I think he can get agitated.
What shape are our water trucks in?
Pardon?
What shape are our water trucks in?
You know, for what we're using for and everything, I think they're pretty good shape.
I mean, are all, all three operational?
They are right now, yeah. Usually when things go wrong with them, it's just minor and they're not down too long.
I was just asking, I hope the hell it doesn't happen, but if we get another fire, I want to be sure that we had everything, we had all water with them.
We get another fire, hopefully we'll have four, but we ain't got a little issue there.
The other one's supposed to be done at the end of the week.
What's in?
Oh, the, some of the plumbing on the back end of the truck where they put the spreader bar, it's not, it's large in diameter is what it needs to be.
Yeah, we talked about that a while back, so we're still waiting for them to-
Well, this is something that just occurred, well, they finally sent me pictures of it at the finished product. And that's what I noticed on it. They didn't use a large enough diameter pipe for the spreader bar, so. We're gonna go look at it today and, uh, see if we can get that straightened out.
We'll work something out with Keith on it.
Do we have anything that's still running that we can do without for pickup to and go to landfill with? My thoughts are, we don't have anything, but I wanted, like, I told Rusty yesterday, I wanted to see what you guys have, so inventories are and see if, you know-
We really don't have any surplus pickups. We're kinda, especially since we're doing, we're parking machines out in the country in safe places. When we're doing our road work, you know, we're using the pickups we got for-
Okay, are all those in, they're okay?
They're okay, they're okay.
That's all three of them are is okay.
Yeah, they're nothing to worry about.
They're not anything you need to put on the road.
Well, when I was, look, wait a minute. We need, we need something to haul, to slide with and to pebble with, but those aren't a lot of miles. And we look at, at what we're gonna do, do we need to look at your worst one? And say, well, maybe this will work out here and then we find something else. See, I'm, I'm trying to look at like, from a fleet picture. What piece here would make sense to-
Yeah, we've actually only got one spare pickup. It's roadworthy enough to leave the county. I mean, for, to Peublo or someplace like that. And, um-
Yeah, okay. But what I'm, what I'm thinking, I'm trying to decide what makes the most sense as a, as a piece of equipment to replace. Is there something? But you got, you got a bunch of junk too.
Yeah, our, basically, our best surplus pickup, I wouldn't want to hand it down to the landfill to go clear to Peublo. So we really don't have anything to give them that I would trust clear to Peublo, so.
Okay, that answered it. I was, I wanted, you know, I thought I knew the answer before, but I wanted to see if, I'm trying to figure out, what can we do the best?
Yeah, about the best we could do in that situation is like to upgrade the pickup I'm driving, for instance. And then take that one to the landfill. It'd be a good one for landfill use and go on to Peublo and things like that.
See, that's, I mean, that's kind of the question I'm asking. How can we, was, look at it as a fleet, what can we do to-
'Cause the pickup I'm running is like an oh-six, oh-five or an oh-six with like seventy-five thousand miles on it.
A lot of miles on it, yeah.
It's in pretty good shape. So if we were gonna upgrade something, that would probably be the route to take is to upgrade that one. Get a new one for me to drive and then send that one to the landfill. Something along that line. And it'd be a good landfill pickup. It'll last them a good long time, 'cause it's in good-
How many miles, a hundred and seventy-five in there?
No, just seventy-five.
Seventy-five.
So, I mean, that might be something to consider.
One or the other of them.
Yeah, well, we've got two pickups like that that are pretty copper and wool bit.
But yours is a newer one, isn't it?
Yeah, I've got the GMC.
And then, is yours the second oldest or third oldest?
I think nine is the second-
Second oldest, yeah, 'cause that's the one I got, the Ford I got last.
Uh, one's an oh-six and I think the other one's an oh-five or something like that, so. We got one eleven years old and the other one's twelve. But both of them are pretty decent pickups.
The third pickup we're talking about, not your two, but the next one, what's its mileage like?
Underneath the oh-six and the oh-five, you mean?
Be that Dodge.
Oh, it's a Dodge, but that's a mechanic's pickup. I don't remember the year on either of those.
Is it probably low mileage?
Nah, it's over a hundred. It's like a hundred and seventeen or a hundred and twenty.
What I'm wondering, does it make sense from a mileage standpoint, maybe look at that pickup?
Yeah, possibly.
I mean, we, we shift them around, but I'm just-
Yeah, that's a possibility, maybe.
Weren't we also gonna try to include Shannon in this discussion?
Yeah, I'm, I'm assuming, but I kinda know what his story is too, because we put three or four new vehicles on here.
Yeah, you know, what I could do is get a list of our pickups, the years and the miles, and then that would help you out. Trying to make a decision whether it's, you know, cost effective, we'd go through the road and bridge department, upgrade one of them and send one out there, so. I can do that, too.
Just think about it. Because Rusty's a foot-
Is that something you could-
Yeah, he doesn't have a vehicle. He's using his own.
Oh, okay. Okay.
Okay, thanks. Last, I think I had, you too?
I did have one of the things. It came to my, one individual called in about some, not muscle, but Canadian thistle that's grown out here on one seventy, one seventy-one. We've contacted Fremont County about getting up here and doing our spraying. They haven't contacted us to let us know when they're gonna be here. It was supposed to be sometime pretty soon, but anyway, they said there was a lot of thistle out on private ground. They wanted to know if that's something that we took care of.
We're not gonna pay for spraying on private grounds this year.
Okay, well, I'll just let them know that. They just wondered, and, oh, this way I got an answer for you.
And that's something we need to look at. I'm not sure in the, in the big picture, what we spend on private ground in terms of what it does for total weed control is really effective. 'Cause we tend to have some areas that are, are, you know, we spray here, well, we've done a nice job here, but we got over here, that's a hell of a mess we've never looked at, but it's still, still blowing out.
Okay, look forward to your research.
Yeah, me too. I'm curious. I'll get that gathered up and I'll get it to you.
I guess until tomorrow.
Don't forget your coffee.
Where's that at again?
Um, just, it's on the corner of Second and Main, uh, that, it's the place where they sell all the ice cream and stuff next to my poncho.
All right.
Yeah, it's got your name on it. So he said, I didn't go check.
Don't forget, she's not coming.
Morning, Louis. How are you?
She's tabled. Treasure is tabled, like she told us yesterday.
We're about done.
Okay, and the extension is, is tabled. So all we have left to be human services?
Well, Sarah dropped off something. Hold on.
Fair books, words like.
Schedule, I forgot my fair schedule.
Looks nice.
Thought you were gonna steal our chair there.
Upstairs.
No, I brought it back.
Upstairs, and the fare board was dotted together.
Whoever put this together, kudos to them. It's a very well done.
Okay, uh-
Human services.
Could you give?
So while we're waiting, I was just gonna place an order with Subway for sandwiches, variety of sandwiches tomorrow, for training tomorrow.
It's one of, plenty of people.
Do you have any idea when you feel it's gonna end? Okay, I'll just leave it, I'll leave the whole deal.
I think, realistically, we need to be through by three o'clock or so. The reason I say that, my experience, if you sit there with people trying to get into some basic stuff, after four hours, their attention spans are about shot.
Absolutely. We're glazed over and ready to go. You're glazed over and ready to go to bed. I agree with you.
And we're actually close to time, I guess, if we, legally, we should take a fifteen-minute recess.
But I agree, we should be reversed.
Hello.
Oh, what happened to Clint?
Morning, he's coming. How are you?
He's coming? Morning. Everybody today. So do you want me to wait for Clint or not? I mean, no, okay. You got your- Well, first one's the, yeah, I'll put that.
Before you start, let me just make a comment.
Okay, sure.
Um, I've heard some feedback about the family that you were concerned about.
Uh-huh.
And it's very positive.
I thought it was in my notes.
Oh, okay, okay, thank you. I got, I got bit by something and when I rubbed it, cut it on the tail, it was a huge thing. And now it's itching now, 'cause of course I touched it, you know? That's how that goes. Okay, so.
I don't know, we need to wait. Clint's here, so that's, I think that's a courtesy, Jay, I would like to take him.
That's fine, 'cause I was gonna include him in something. You're gonna be so excited.
Okay.
I know, yeah, right.
You've got the floor.
Okay, I just, I just have my report and, you know, you guys see it, and if you have any questions about it, everything is, is fine. We're, we're on track. Everything is, we're not having any issues or anything as far as that goes. Everything, we're doing okay. Our ELC funds, which aren't gonna show up on this, because this didn't happen until June. But we were very, um, almost to the end of our ELC funds and got an email and they-
What ELC is?
Energy Outreach Colorado. I'm sorry, I should not do that. We're so used to just doing those acronyms. That's that grant we get. We use it to help.
I know what it is.
Yeah, and, um, we're getting very short on funds, but they got a little extra money, so we got a little extra money. So we like a little extra money. The LEAP program, um, closed out the end of April. Some payments were made in June. They had a little extra money. All of the LEAP households got an extra hundred and twenty-five dollars, and that was sent out the end of June. And of course, they sent a notice saying that payroll was gonna run on the twenty-eighth. Payroll didn't run until the twenty-ninth. So then we got all these people calling our office all day long. Where is it? It's supposed to be there, but we just told them, hold on. And they, they did send out an email to us saying that something happened, it didn't run, so it should be tomorrow. So that ran, so I gave them an extra hundred and twenty-five dollars. So that was all very, very helpful. And so, as far as this goes, we're fine. And then, right, look, the next page, which is the food assistance. We did have an increase in our food assistance households in the month of May. Never know why that is, but we did. It's this one here, it's a child chart. Why, you know what? Well, you know what, and I got it mixed up. It should not be there. And I stapled that. It should be on the back.
I don't, I went through it, didn't-
Oh, you don't have it at all? Oh, okay. There was staple on those when Kelly came in and I just stapled it. Yeah.
I found it. It's towards the back.
Yeah, yeah, that's because I had mine stapled in the wrong place. But it just shows that we did have an increase in the food benefits.
And why would that be?
I don't know. It's just, we got people coming in, moving in, moving out. This, the month of June, we had, we've had a lot of people coming in. We had four different households or people coming in that were moved here and were staying out at the lake. And my understanding is that Sheriff's Office has gone out there and kinda cleared that out. It was like a, I don't know what out there. But we had about four households come in and they had moved out here, moved here and were staying at the lake. Two of them we know have moved because they have contacted us and we've transferred their cases. So the other two, I'm not sure about. We haven't seen them. We haven't heard from them, so I don't know.
How many of them had kids?
Uh, I'm not sure if any of them did. Yeah.
I know one of them did.
Oh, could be.
To see me. One, one of them did, I knew. The one who claimed her, she was counting a place out for a ten million dollar business or something.
Oh, no, I didn't, no, I don't, no, I, no, I didn't know that one. That was, that was, no, that was news to me. You did send somebody down. That was one of the people that was living out at the lake and they were out of food.
Right.
And they were looking for a food voucher. Well, we already had them on, food benefits. And so we referred them to the Sheriff's Center.
And, and that's fine.
Yeah, yeah, and that's fine, but I did want to let you know, yeah, we already had them on. And, uh, they were living at a place and got evicted, so they were out at the lake. And, um, but when they came in, we said, well, you, you received your maximum benefit and they're getting the max benefit. And why? Well, we're just out of food, so we told them to go to the Sheriff's Center, so I did want to let you know that that did happen too.
And they came back and told.
Oh, okay. Okay. And then our community service block grant out, should-
Hold on just a second.
Oh, did you have questions? All right.
So we had about two hundred and five on assistance in April. And I'm guessing that went up to seventeen in May, so that's only twelve family increase. What does June, what did June look like?
I don't know. I, I haven't done, wait, we haven't done the numbers on that yet. I, I don't know. Well, this-
Because you look at this, it looks like, oh my gosh, this is a big increase, but you look at the actual numbers, where the chart starts on one seventy-five, that's a, that's a-
Yeah.
That's a change. I don't think that's a significant change.
Well, you know, it just, we start seeing during the summer months, we usually start seeing the amount of people ongoing down because they're able to work more and that type of stuff. But I don't know. We've had a lot of people coming in that just have moved here. And I'm like, I don't know where you're living, you know, 'cause we rentals are non-existent, so. But they find places or something. I don't know.
You got a number squatting on Forest Service?
Well, yeah, and, and that happens too, you know, so.
Okay, go ahead.
Okay, oh, no, that's fine. And then our community service block grant, we're doing okay on that too. No problems there. And then the Energy Outreach. I told you, when you look at the balance that's on this one, and in the month of June, the month of June, we've actually, we get payments to that and knock that down to where we only had two hundred and some dollars left. It's not showing up on this one, 'cause we haven't done the numbers on this one, but it's gonna look like that. And then our state allocations are okay. And then Rod's got his TFAB stuff right-
Hold on just a second.
Oh, I'm sorry, I go TFAB.
All right, no, no, I'm just trying to find the pages.
Yeah.
Front page. Last place I'd look.
Yeah. Yeah, and, yeah, 'cause when you send them to you guys, they kinda get jumbled from how we have them, so.
Got a question about, I'm honored.
You're on this page.
Okay, okay.
Year to date, we're, this is through June thirty, so this is half the year. Our daycare is only used eleven, twelve percent, basically.
Right.
Um, are you able to allocate, if there's extra funds in that, to some other fund that you're running low on?
Nope. No, we cannot do that. On our TANF program, if we have extra TANF funds and we run low on daycare, we can send it to TANF. And if we, I mean, to daycare. If we're over, if we are under on our daycare, over on our good daycare and we're under on our TANF, we can do the TANF funds to daycare. And we can also do it to child welfare.
It can run down, helping out up.
That's right. Yeah, 'cause that's a federal, TANF's federal. And foster care, they will let us do that. We fell out, fell out of thing at the end of the fiscal year, saying, if I have excess, um, that I, first thing I want it to go to is foster care. 'Cause we have more foster care, um, money, I mean, less foster care money than I do daycare money there. And expenses, I have more foster care expenses.
Is there a number you could share with us on how many people, how many children are in foster care at the moment?
Four. We have, we have four in placement right now. Four of them in placement. We, we got one out of a treatment center and she is in a, um, gonna set up an apartment by herself, doing, um, now she's going to start getting a job and she's, she's doing super. So we're hoping to be able to get her going. Yeah, okay.
Do we need more foster care homes in Costa County?
We do, and that's one thing that we've been trying to do while we did, um, at the health fair. We set up a booth and we did that. Uh, we've put some stuff out there, um, for foster parents, 'cause, yeah, we didn't have any. I think now we have four. And so, which is very helpful, that when we get a call in the middle of the night or something, that we don't have to try-
You don't have to go to a pebble.
Yep, and finding, yeah, finding a home sometime late at night is not always easy and stuff. And so, yeah, we like to have foster homes up here.
There's something, Jay, I'm just thinking about, that we might have some kind of a drive or a function or a spotlight on it, maybe in September, October or something. I'm just, just thinking out loud, but.
Yeah, foster, yeah, we could use some foster homes. We have some that, a lot of the foster homes might be younger children, not the teenagers. Gee, I wonder why that is. But, um, and I don't know if we have any right now. Well, we do have one that's got a teenager in it, yeah, so. Okay, any other questions there?
I would like a generic answer, if you can, and don't go where you can't.
Okay.
We had a, a case last year that involved a family that was having some problems. There was a death in the family. I don't want to get any more specific, but I don't know what I'm talking about. There was maybe an uncle or a brother or something that lived out of state.
Oh, yes.
Any news on how that client is doing now?
You're talking foster care? What are you talking about now?
This was the one that, that had a suicide in a family. Grandmother. We can talk later.
Oh, yeah. Oh, okay. Yeah, no, I'm talking, I know what you're talking about.
I don't want to breach the confidence of you.
Yeah, yeah, no, yeah, why don't you talk to me about it later? That would probably be better. Okay, okay.
Just out of curiosity, when we have folks that have had some tough times, you wonder down the road-
What's going on?
How are they doing?
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay. And then our TFAB stuff, and we'll be getting a truck in on Monday again and we'll be doing that, so. One thing I, um, this is, this, now I'm talking to you, Clint. You're excited, I know. We, um, the Board of County Commissioners, every year has to sign a TANF, Colorado Works TANF, Temporary Need Assistance for Needed Families, Daycare MOU, Memorandum of Understanding. We've been doing this ever since it came in to pass. Every so often, they'll change a little bit of the wording in it and, you know, and all that good stuff. Well, this year, I don't know why, but it has been a big deal about the MOU. They have worked on it. They have changed it. They have done everything to it. My directors meeting in June, they said, it's out there, get your commissioners to sign it. And everybody at the table said, we haven't received the MOU. And this other gal said, from the state, said, no, they haven't sent it out yet. They're still working on it. Got an email a week or so ago. This is where we're still working on it. So, we ever get the MOU, I'm gonna give it to you so that you can look at it and review it. Because what I- Because what I saw, they are changing a lot of the stuff, they're taking a lot of the language out and, so if we ever get it, um. Is the best thing to do, put it in your mailbox or what, so that you can get it, or can we call or something?
I just remind you, I haven't checked mine for a couple of months.
Will you get that electronic?
Yeah.
Well, maybe you just forward the Clint email.
Yeah, I could do that, I don't have Clint's email, but I could do that.
Let's see, look at all the stuff I've got.
Yeah, I don't think we have it, cause they'll probably, they'll send it to me and that.
But.
Yeah, but I could, I could email it to you so that you can review it, and I could email it to all of you guys, so you could review it.
Cause the old one would just was routine.
It was, it was just routine, and now they're going through and they're changing stuff and.
I suppose I better look at it.
Yeah, I, but they've got attorneys working on it from the larger counties, and I think that's where some of that came from, so anyhow. But I just wanted to give you a heads up on that, so I will, I'll email it to all of you when I get it. Then, um, we have a electronic data, electronic data management system. Right now, I know, right now.
That's the one they forgot to train you for, wasn't it?
Well, well, no, that was LEAP.
Oh.
Um, but, right now, when somebody comes in and they apply for benefits, we have to have certain things verified, especially income. So, they have to bring in pay stubs and we copy all of this stuff and we put it in a case file. Larger counties are trying to go to electronic data, so they scan them. And now, they're talking about being able to scan these documents and then putting them right into the computer. And so, that's where they sit, we don't have to have them in the paper files anymore, and this is good stuff. Their counties were like, well, that's great, but equipment costs money. So, up at this date, for the small and medium counties, they came up with funds to buy the scanners. And it was not mandatory that we do this, but the funding was only there now, so if you didn't take your scanners, you're not gonna get the funding. So we took the scanners. So we have the scanners, so we had to find room for scanners, but we've got them, and, um, but, they're not gonna start doing this until like January or something. Yeah, it just goes on, but anyhow, so, we will be learning how to do that, and we've got our little scanners now on there, thank goodness.
Is your, your hardware with your computer system large enough to store all your files?
Well, they go up to the big computer in the sky up at Denver, cause we're hooked in, we're hooked in with them. And so, and the good thing about that is right now, if we have to transfer a case, somebody applies and we, and we got their pay stubs and all this stuff, it's in our case file. So then they move to another county, so if the other county needs to verify something, then they call us, we have to send it to them.
Okay.
Now, supposedly, it's gonna attach to that case and they'll be able to see it. So whoever looks at this case will know that the birth certificate is there, the pay stubs are there, or whatever, and ID, that's another thing that we have to have. And they'll all be in that case file. That's how it's supposed to work.
That looks a good plan.
It is a good plan, if it works, but as we know.
Keep the paper copies for a year.
Yeah, I, yeah, as we know, there is always, we'll call, tees as we go along, Medicaid Transportation is a prime, a prime example, when they did the new company that took, took that over. It's not only Medicaid Transportation, it was all providers, the clinic, whoever, anybody that built, it was something like, I don't know, ninety-four thousand providers were in this system. And it wasn't working well, and, but, it's finally working better, we were not getting Medicaid reimbursement, we've got all our reimbursements now and things are working better with it. But, you know, it's a new system, it takes a while before they get all the bugs worked out of it, so we're sure we're gonna see a lot of bugs with this one. So, but that's basically what we got going on, and then they're changing on our computer system, how we enter the income, and now we're doing, Ron is doing a webinar, I did one yesterday, we have another one to do. That tells us about all of the different things that are going on and how we're gonna have to enter that. And they're bringing that up Monday, no, Sunday, so Monday when we come in, it's gonna be different. And then on July 12th, they're actually gonna give us hands-on, well, it's already gonna be up. We're gonna have a little practice area where you can go in and practice on July 12th. Well, you're gonna bring it up on Monday, and we're gonna have people in here and we're gonna be entering it. So, we're going through the webinars and it just shows the different screens and how they moved them over here, and now we gotta enter stuff differently. But, most of the time, we're able to figure stuff out like that, so. But that's all I have right at the moment.
Are you gonna be present tomorrow for the training?
Oh, yes, yes, oh, yes, I'll be here for the training tomorrow, you bet. I think that's at ten or something, right?
Ten, yeah.
Question I ask you every month, uh, is anything unusual that we need to be aware of, anything going on that we can help you with?
No, I don't think so, we're just getting through it, you know?
Good report.
June was, auditors were here and we had a lot of stuff going on, so it was kind of a crazy month, but now it seems to be a.
Have you seen anything from the auditors yet?
No.
Did they ask them a lot of questions?
Oh, well, yeah, and we got grants, so we have to give them all of that stuff on the grant.
No more than usual.
Oh, no, no more than usual.
Yeah, they're on our agenda for August the first.
I know, but this gives us an idea.
Yeah, no, nothing, nothing that was, you know, nothing outstanding or anything like that, that we have to give them all of our vacations, stick all of that stuff. Have to give them a big report that they send down from the state, that was a challenge too, because it wouldn't let me print it. I could see it, I couldn't get it printed off, finally we got it printed, got it to them, they used to just send it to them and now they, but I couldn't get it to print. I have problems with that computer doing that, it'll lock up and then we have to come back in and it just does that, I don't know why. It, it's that, it's that system that they have, goes down a lot, but anyhow, but anyhow, so, outside of that, it was just kind of a crazy month, we had a lot going on. Okay, that's all I have.
Great, thank you.
Okay, and yeah, I'll see you guys tomorrow then.
Yep.
I can't get up. And as soon as I get that MOU from, I, I will email it to everybody, okay, so that we can.
Thank you.
Look at it, because it used to be pretty simple, but, you know, we don't want it simple.
Thanks for all that you're doing.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
You want us closed again?
No, we just have, we had a convention alcohol, so we had to shut it here. Okay, I believe that does complete our agenda. Do you have anything, anything else? It is ten thirty-eight. I would declare the July 6th meeting in the Custer County Board of Commissioners adjourned. Thanks for being.